So hello, welcome everyone to the Planning Commission's meeting of March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, we have no guests here in this, in the studio. And it looks like we have no guests on the Zoom call at the moment. So anyway, welcome everybody. Would anyone like to make any adjustments to the agenda for this evening? Okay, hearing none, we'll proceed along. We must have no comments on the non-agenda items since.
Oh, actually, I do.
Mark, okay, great.
So a non-agenda item is basically related to the ARPA funds and the REC committees, uh, interest in doing stuff on in the Volunteers Green.
Yeah.
Which, which is part of the floodway. And we had, uh, zoned it pretty, pretty strongly when we put the zoning in, which, um, at this point, pretty much eliminates even so much as adding a picnic table to the, uh, park in the view of, uh, of Tyler, the, the zoning administrators perspective. So, um, it seems a little strict, little perhaps over strict, I don't know, uh, what we can do about that in the short term, but it is something that I would like to visit and discuss with folks to see if we can allow a little bit more flexibility in the floodplain, particularly for, uh, publicly owned properties, which is kind of my take back in the day was, you know, you kind of want to honestly curtail the residential uses and development and that kind of thing. I mean, that all sort of makes sense. But with so much town land and easements in the, in the flood way and flood zone, it really hampers the town's ability to do things that are benefit for the whole community. Um, and, and I'd like to, we're going to keep investigating this on our own and seeing, uh, what more we can find out about it in the interpretations of, uh, of the current regs, but, uh, hope with the, at some point, probably sooner rather than later, we can, uh, visit the floodplain overlay district and, and talk about some of the development issues there.
Okay. Can put that on the list.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay. Any other items people want to talk about? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to number four on the agenda review of the minutes of our meeting of March first. Any comments, corrections, additions? Changes, deletions to the minutes of three one twenty-three? Okay, not hearing any, we will accept those minutes into the record as written. And move on to our program for the evening. Uh, which is, we're going to start off with a continuation of the discussion of the village neighborhoods. And as usual, there are some mapping questions. So I'm going to attempt to share my screen so that I can point to. We'll look at the map of the village neighborhood north and look at a couple of kind of muddy areas related to the line between that district and the RC district, the map of which we have already approved. So let me see if I can go to the map that we approved. And just show you what the concerns are. I have taken all these maps to the people at the Regional Planning Commission, since we don't have Revi to make maps for us. I've taken the maps to those folks and they're making some other more clear maps. And in the course of doing that, we've come across a couple of little items that are not quite clear. So on this map, if you look at, can you see my cursor there? Is it moving around? Can you see the map?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
So this lot right here, where the cursor is, is the Goodwin Baker lot. And it has a little projection, as you can see here, beyond Millet Street. Well, it turns out there's a tiny little lot right here under the street part, which I'm going to show you on the other map that CCRPC made where you can actually see it. But we didn't really make it clear whether that tiny little lot that's under the street is part of the new RC district, or if we're going to keep it in the neighborhoods, which is just, you know, to the north of that. So there's also a second lot right next to it, which is right here, which has a Tilden Ave designation, but it also has frontage onto Millet Street. So now I'm going to go to the other map so that we can actually see those. They were concealed beneath the sign, so we failed to really make it clear what their status was. Okay, so here's the map that CCRPC has been working on for us. And you can see now, here's the Goodwin Baker lot. And here's this little tiny lot that was concealed underneath the street sign. It does have an access onto Millet Street right here. Millet Street designation, its ID number is Millet Street. Um, and then we have this other lot here, TL zero zero five one, if you can read that, this lot right here, which has a Tilden Ave ID number, but it also has frontage down here on Millet Street. So what I had them do for the moment at Regional Planning is to put the little lot, this one here, which only has frontage on Millet Street included into the RC district. And if in fact that is what we want to do, then we're going to have to change the map again, and we'll do it at the Select Board's public hearing because it isn't clearly shown as part of the RC district on the map that we approved. I also contacted the powers who own this lot here, this L-shaped lot. By the way, neither of these two lots, the owners do not live there. The little tiny lot, the owner lives in Jeffersonville, apparently. And this lot here, the L-shaped lot, the powers live on Snipe Island Road. So I've contacted them just to see if they care. You know, we could theoretically include it in the RC district, or we could possibly include part of it in the RC district, the part that faces onto Millet Street. Or we could leave it in the neighborhood district. And all of those possibilities, I haven't really investigated yet because I just got this map. So how difficult it would be to do any of those things, I don't know, but I thought the owner should be asked if he has a present, you know, a preference. I'm not sure we care. So anyway, so that's the, that little problem right there is those lots. So anyway, otherwise, the area in yellow is what we're proposing for the residential, uh, neighborhoods north district. Let's see if I can get that, there we go. Um, yes.
So those two, first of all, did you hear back from the owners, the powers or the owners in Jeffersonville?
The powers are interested in having a discussion about it. So this is all very recent, within the last few days, because CCR was working on these maps. So the powers are definitely interested in finding out what the implications are of doing one or the other thing. You know, I guess we can develop our own opinion separately from that, but you know, when Revi notified personally every individual whose lot was going to be changed from one district to another, he probably didn't notify the powers because their lot was not going to be changed because we weren't dealing with the residential neighborhoods then. So I'm thinking he probably didn't know anything about it. So that it probably, we should ask him. I mean, what do you all think?
Well, so then the lot next to it, you, you, that's a duplex, very similar to the duplexes that are on Baker Street. Um, so you got that, I mean, I think it right now, definitely to me would be a part of the neighborhood. And, um, I just can't imagine that, I don't know. But anyway, I'm just curious what they had to say. I mean, if you want to table this for another time to discuss it, that's fine. I just wanted to hear if there was any input from the owners.
Yeah, well, I'll definitely report back. I mean, presumably by the time of our next meeting, I will have had this conversation with the powers. I may have contacted these other people, but to me, that one is pretty clearly part of Millet Street. And I have driven along there and it is definitely part of Millet Street. So I'm pretty comfortable including that in the RC district. It's just that we didn't really do that on our other map because you couldn't see it because it was under the label. So, um.
So why, why does it being on Millet Street have anything to do with it? Because we've got, the Heelys are on Millet Street too, technically.
What's on Millet Street?
The Heelys property, it's right in between Millet and Baker. It's like, and I even think technically the house that's on the corner, um, Harriet's old house is technically on Millet Street too. So I don't think that using the Millet Street definition works. See the two, yeah, that's the Heelys and then that's Harriet's old house.
Um, well, this one, ML zero zero three one has frontage on Baker Street. The ML, ML zero zero two nine doesn't look like it has any frontage on Baker Street. So, you know, I guess we ought to consider what we want to do, you know, how we want to deal with that one. So we didn't really look at the IDs on these to see if that should have any bearing, but.
When we did the map, I never, I don't know about anybody else, but I never was saying, oh, we're doing Millet Street one way, Baker Street another, Tilden another. I looked at the Goodman Baker Building as its own entity. And the rest of those as more of a residential neighborhood-y kind of existence, so.
Well, I think there were meetings where we definitely talked about Millet Street as being in the RC district and up to Millet Street, you know, everywhere south of that, including Millet Street. So.
But we only have one property, what is it? There's two. Well, all right, we can, whenever you want to tackle it, let us know.
Okay, so, I mean, it could be when we talked about it being up to Millet Street, it's like up to the one side of Millet Street that Goodwin Baker Building is on. We weren't really clear enough somehow about it, whether it's everything on both sides of Millet Street, everything just on the south side of Millet Street or the east side. Um, so anyway, so we need to become clear about it and develop opinions about it. So we will have this conversation again, and maybe we should look at, you know, these two parcels. Maybe we should, you know, do, do we think we want to contact this, this owner of this tiny lot? To see if they would like to be in the neighborhoods or in the RC district, would people like to do that?
Well, I, I, hi, Virginia, uh, yeah, I would say that, uh, that we could contact them as far as seeing if it is, because they're really a corner, they're sort of wedged into the Goodwin Baker Street, Goodwin Baker Building property. Um, but I'm kind of with Joyce, I mean, when we were talking about this, really, we were just sectioning out the Goodwin Baker Building itself because it kind of is a very unique property in this residential area. Um, pretty sure, I can't remember who it was, but the people at thirty-one, uh, Millet, which crosses over into Baker, were, were kind of against.
That's the Heelys, hundred percent against.
So I mean, they're not a question and, and.
This lot you're talking about?
Yes. And the, and Harriet Rix's property too, where, which is right in front of theirs. Like, I don't remember anything about.
Nineteen Millet Street?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's on West Main Street, but it, yeah, and technically, the Goodman Baker Building is on the same side of the street as these, just FYI. Like, all of them are on the left side of Millet as you head down it.
True, and, and the Goodwin Baker does back up to some residential properties. But I mean, it is a very unique building that, um, warrants under, you know, market trends to, to, to be given a little bit more flexibility about, about their, their residential capabilities and the commercial. Going, adding these other properties that are in the neighborhood are, um, you're going the opposite way, you're going from residential to a commercial view. Now, the, the little property you're talking about in the corner that you did turn to brown, um, certainly I think the property owner has a right to say, and I, I, we could probably flop, I could, I would probably be comfortable flopping either way with that, depending on the feedback of the neighbor, which is basically, uh, uh, was that, uh, Tilden fifty-one? Tilden fifty-one though, is across from other properties, and I think at, at Tilden fifty-one is, is slightly in that neighborhood um, grouping. And I remember there was a, I do remember that when they wanted to develop that, there was a tremendous amount of, uh, neighborhood pushback on even allowing a duplex onto that property. So if we were to go in significantly increased density there, um, I, you know, one property's developed now, but two, I, I don't think, I think it's setting a bad precedent. If we're trying to maintain that neighborhood area, the little property on Millet, you know, I could go either way, and I think the two in the front that are still have Millet addresses, I don't think they're interested in, in becoming, and I, I don't think, uh, I don't think, certainly not thirty-one with its crossover onto Baker Street would be appropriate at all to, to even consider putting in the, uh, the higher density and, and additional commercial opportunities with that district, with that HTR.
Well, I think we did talk about those two properties and leaving them in the neighborhood. I just don't think we talked about these ones up here. Um, the other thing is, so these properties here, we also included in the RC district. Okay, these brown properties, not that it's going to matter because one of them is the Catholic Church, which.
And one is a doctor's office.
And one is the doctor's office, which is suitable to be in the residential commercial district. This one is a multifamily house.
The one above it is a multifamily house. JR forty-seven is, uh, is, uh, like a little, like, almost like hotel condo.
Well, that's, that's the six unit, six unit motel, but I think this one is also a multifamily. The remodel, that one is multifamily. So I don't see that there's any need for not having these in the RC district.
I think we agreed on that, right?
Yes, we agreed on that, and we agreed to have these in the residential. The only thing we didn't really talk about were these properties that had frontage on, uh, on Millet Street. So, um, you know, we can talk to the owners and see what they want, but then, you know, then we'll have to take the other factors into consideration that you, Mark and Joy were mentioning about the neighborhood, neighborhoodiness of it. Um, so anyway, that is in progress and regional planning will map it out any way we want to look at it. So.
Uh, now, did you try to reach out to those folks on, uh, what is it, Millet one eleven or? And they weren't available, or we haven't been able to get ahold of them?
ML zero one one one, no, I haven't, they live in Jeffersonville and I haven't, I don't have an email or a phone number, but I could write them a letter. So, you know, I can write them a letter, it'll take a little while, but we have three weeks till our next meeting, so we should have plenty of time. Uh, the powers I can talk to, you know, I emailed them and they said they would be interested in looking at the map and looking at the differences and.
And the powers are Tilden fifty-one?
Yeah, that's the Tilden zero zero fifty-one, this one here.
Yeah.
Which is a duplex currently.
I'm, I'm, I'm less interested in, in adding them to the higher density.
Yep. Oh, Gary is here, he has a comment he wants to make.
Yeah, I agree with Mark, that, that new duplex there, it's so oriented to the residential portion of the neighborhood. I think it's a mistake to even think about carrying that.
Mm-hmm. Okay, there is this piece down here that has sort of a shed on it which fronts on to Millet Street. I mean, I don't know what's involved in dividing a property and having part in one district and part in another. I know it can be done, but it's, might be messy, I don't know. Um.
Not really for that, honestly. I think we ought to think about keeping that property in the Village North.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so, you know, we'll talk to the powers and they'll have an opinion about it, and then we'll make a decision based on everything.
They can certainly always petition the select board too, because now this is this, that district has moved on technically. So whatever we get ahold of from, uh, the folks in Jeffersonville, uh, I would imagine time is of the interest, uh, interest because that, that hearing from the select board should be warned once they settle down a little bit following the town meeting mix-up.
It's on April thirteenth, the hearing on these amendments.
Then, well, let's hopefully we get, get to them before then. I mean, I wouldn't even try and consider the Tilden. Um, I would be willing, I'd be willing based on what the, uh, Millet folks, that Millet property folks say in Jeffersonville. Um, I'd kind of like to take a look at the property, but, um.
It's a very beat up old house.
Yeah.
I drove by there.
Beat up duplex, duplex.
It's a duplex?
It is.
Property?
Yeah, it's just like all the other ones on Baker Street. It is like the same front porch, like the mill housing. Yeah, I know, I, I have a property on Baker Street backs up to that house, I know it very well.
Yeah.
All right. So that would be in question as to whether we turn that to yellow. Back to yellow, I think it was yellow, although you couldn't really see it.
I, I certainly thought it was yellow until tonight.
You certainly what?
I thought it was yellow. I mean, every, everything about this was, was, the conversation was strictly referring to the Goodwin Baker property. Being, that was it, so.
All right. This is not any, in any way an official map. This is just the one that the CCRPC is working on to get right so that we can have a map we can look at closely with the parcel numbers. All right, so the next slight question, which it may be, um, that we'll be consulting our new planner that we have about what to do with this area down here. Um, so for right now, CCRPC just put the whole thing in yellow, this is all part of the AgRes, but it seems like it's that these buildings just have a footprint, I think they're just footprint lots. So it's unclear to me how you would designate that exactly. We had it on our other map as just being the yellow was each little box and the rest of the territory was AgRes. So I just want to make sure that we designate that correctly on the final map that we have. Um, so these are just questions that, you know, Regional Planning asked me about this and I didn't really have the answers, so. Um, I don't know that any, there's any question of doing anything differently one way or the other. I think this land is conserved for the density for those buildings. Conserved as open space. So anyway, so that's that little question that we're trying to get solved. And there was one other one that I just wanted to show you. So I can get this to work. Um, which is down here in the area, and this, this doesn't really have to do with our village neighborhoods north, but it's kind of related to the RC district. If you look at these lots here, it seems to me like the whole of these lots, we added in. So I don't know why Regional Planning has followed this line. I've got to ask them about it, I've got to ask Melanie about it. You know, there's this line here, which might be like floodplain or something that, um, which obviously will factor in what you can build there. You won't, you know, be able to build in the floodplain, but, um, Melanie's got these lots with this line down the middle, and I think these should be the whole lot, so. That's just one other little detail. Um, while we're looking at this part of the map, we could look at the south neighborhoods. Oops. Um, maybe I can make it longer. And make sure that this is what we have in mind of these for this uh, zoning district. So this is Thompson Road here, the first property on the corner here is in the residential district. Then these properties along here in the brown bricks are already in the RC district, so we're just leaving them there. We come along here. This property has been sort of divided in half, which hopefully we can fix. I mean, it has a little piece that's in the RC district, I don't know why that is, but hopefully we'll be able to fix that. This is Richmond Terrace. This is the rest of Thompson Road to the edge of the Water and Sewer District. And these are the properties. Gary, you can probably say what all this, which has been left in the AgRes, what is all this land? Is that wetlands or something?
Rest in forest legacy.
So that's preserved land, okay. So we won't, you know, there's no reason to include that in this neighborhood district. Then coming along Cochrane Road and at various times, we've ended this district at various places along here. You know, we, at one point, we stopped it here, then we kind of, so this map shows it going out to the extent of the Water and Sewer District, basically, and built upon lots. So is that what we want? And the same on the other side, it includes Bridge Street and. And the same on the other side. It includes Bridge Street and Old Brooklyn Court. So everything basically is south of the river. Gary?
So, uh, if you go to the far right, that last square, that is the cemetery. I don't know if you wanna keep that in the district or not. Doesn't hurt to have it, I guess.
Mm-hmm.
Then if you come back, you'll see there's one lot that, uh, is really part of the. Come back about seven lots. Uh, and an area where it's in the Forest Legacy. Portion goes right down to Cochrane Road. Keep coming back, three more. Spaces with the curse there.
Um, so where are we going here?
One more. All right, that, that is the section where the Forest Legacy land. Goes owned by Preston, goes right down to Cochrane Road. So, we've taken out. You know, probably ninety-nine percent of the Forest Legacy land, so I don't know if you wanna be consistent. And take that out.
Okay, so this piece, and then what about this piece here?
That piece is, uh, where Lincoln was building the house. It, it's, uh, C O zero two nine eight. Um, I don't know why it's not labeled. It's currently owned by Logan and Murray Brown, which is C O zero three hundred.
Here.
Right of it, yeah.
Okay, so this.
I don't think it's been joined. I think it's two individual lots.
Okay. So there's no point in taking that out? That could stay in there?
And then back on Thompson Road, I know there was discussion last time we were going through this about ending the commercial. Right, uh, just have the, the daycare. You know, first on the corner of Far Road and Thompson Road.
That's here.
That in the, uh, brick marking, but the next is a small, small house and then there's the. Uh.
Duplex, yeah.
And then the next one is. And. On to Catherine Jet, the one that's divided and.
Mm-hmm.
I thought there was, maybe I. Is not remembering right, but I thought there was some agreement that that really belonged in those two. Areas belonged in the residential, so.
So that's T R zero one five zero. And T R zero one one eight.
Gary, would you mind stepping up to the table? Just sit at the table, yeah, because I'll pick up your voice a little better.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody have any comments about that? I know we talked about that. I didn't know whether we came to any conclusions about it, but.
Yeah, I recall it as how Gary remembers it as well. I think, I don't think those homes wanted to be in it. So I, I'd say it's their call. I don't, I don't see the harm in those properties being added to it since, you know, on three sides there, two sides they are.
Yeah.
Uh, associated with either. Neighborhood, so either district, so it's up to them.
Okay, and what about the cemetery? And what's that little piece right next to the cemetery?
That's Rick and Chi Chi Barrett's land goes around the cemetery.
Okay, so that's like their driveway or something, or part of their land here?
Uh, it's part of their land, but their driveway is down the road farther.
Okay.
There is a logging road. I think that's where one of the access, they let an access to get up to the trails. On Cochran's and Preston's land.
So do we wanna take that out of the residential district and keep it in the A R?
Um, I, that's one I think that we should put to the, the property owner. Now granted, they're outside of the, uh. Water District, which is, you know, the big factor for. Development, but as you go out that road, if it is developable and they wanna bring in water and sewer. Uh, you know, to expand it, kinda like, uh, Joy and Bobber are looking into, you know, I. Extending that as far as we can, I don't think is an unreasonable thing on Cochran Road. It's still, it's still, uh, you know, if it's hooked up to water and sewer, there could be some, some, some nice affordable housing. Or even not so affordable housing, but, you know, higher density housing along that route. That's something that folks along Cochran are gonna wanna. Discuss and investigate, but I'd say the option should be left open, but. If they're not into it, then we should drop the cemetery just because of the continuity issue.
Um, so currently, this map has. A divided property, then if this little, you know, the little area that's in pink is only part of that property, so. If it's problematic to divide a property and put some of it in one zone and some of it in another, then. It may be that we either wanna have this whole property, the Barrett's whole property, or take this out or, and take this out. So we could talk to the Barretts. What about this piece over here? Do we know anything about this piece of land that doesn't have a parcel ID on it?
It's owned by the Nature Conserv- Conservancy, like they own the island above it and they own. That big block, uh, to northeast or northwest. It's all one parcel.
This.
And it's, uh, it's well into floodplain. It's one of the first places it floods. So, uh.
So we should take that out, probably. Doesn't matter. I mean, you can't do anything with it, but, I mean, especially if we're gonna take out the cemetery in this piece, then. Might as well take that piece out. Um. So, these are houses here, these are houses here. This, this, is this in floodplain, Gary? Is all this in floodplain?
Uh, not all of it, but about, I'd say over ninety percent of it is floodplain.
Okay.
There's two areas that do come out of floodplain.
And it, it's all contin- continuous with your property, right?
Right.
So do you care whether it's in or out?
I don't care either way.
You can't do anything with it in the floodplain?
If you take it out, I guess you're gonna have the same issue of, of parcel with two zones.
Right, yeah. Okay, what about this lot? Does anyone know anything about this lot?
That's, uh, Soprano's. It's a small. Well, uh, gray house. It's, it's close to the road. That's porch facing the road. It does have a parcel ID number.
Okay, and this is the Prince's right here, right?
Right.
So that's, that can stay in presumably in these two. And stay in, so. Any other issues that is, this is the town, right? The well?
Right.
Any comments? No comments? Okay. Well, let's just go briefly back to the north and. We can make sure that the map up there is what we want. Let's see if I can get back up there. Okay, so. This is the map that we want other than those contested pieces. For the Village North? Yes, no? This does have. The schools on it, I think. Was this? This is a school. This is a school lot and this is a school lot too, I think. So I don't know if we care which district they're in, the schools, that they wanna be in. The remainder of the high-density res. I don't know why we'd put one in one and not in the other. Any, what do you have any thoughts about that? You know, at some point, we'll probably have to do something about the high-density, the name of the high-density res, because. Other districts now have a much higher density.
Yeah.
This than the high-density residential, which is a pretty low-density area, so, you know, someday we'll have to fix that. Okay, so not hearing anything, I think we'll maybe take that. Um. I don't know. What do you want, people? Do you want to have the two schools in the Village Residential District? Or in the high-density res, the other district where this. Doesn't seem to make that much difference one way or the other. I mean, nothing's gonna happen there, but. Okay, not hearing anything. Oh, um, well, we'll look into it a little further then, do some more research. That's a good idea, so, okay, so that's the map situation. The other thing that we wanna make sure that we have, the, is the names that we wanna use. We have used both. Village Residential Neighborhood North and Village Residential Neighborhood South. And then just Village Neighborhood North and Village Neighborhood South, which is kinda shorter and there's less letters involved. Does anyone have any feelings about that? What do you, which do you, which way do you wanna go? Anybody care? Oh, Allison, hello, welcome.
Hi, I've been here for a spell. To get on, but, um, it, the, if you specify residential, that makes, that adds clarity to it. If that's what we want.
Yep, well, a residential neighborhood, I guess, is a little clearer than just a neighborhood, a residential neighborhood, a neighborhood.
Yeah.
It would be nice.
Can I ask you?
Or we see too much further, yeah.
The, you know, the, the yellow on the map or the golden color there that's got the dots on it, is that the residential? Which one is that?
The high-density residential.
High-density residential, okay.
Yeah, it goes all the way up like South View and Valley View and.
Mm-hmm.
All kinds of land to the east is in the high.
If we say high density, about what is the, it, what are the sizes of the lots? I mean, I assume that those are not on the sewer and water, right? They're, do they have their own systems?
Correct.
So they have to be an acre?
Um. Well, I will tell you what the high-density residential is. Um, lot area. No lot served by municipal water and sewer shall be less than two-thirds of an acre. But there aren't any that are served at the moment. Um. And why isn't it doing this? The minimum lot area shall be increased to one acre for any lot not served by municipal water and sewer.
Okay.
So two-thirds of an acre per dwelling. As opposed to one-third of an acre in the current, um. The residential commercial district, one-third that we're going to one-fourth of an acre.
Am I still connected? I don't think so. I lost it.
What did you lose?
We can hear you, Allison. You can hear me. I can't, now my screen is showing some dumb email thing. I wonder, oh, gosh.
So I put the map back for you to look at the dots and the dotted.
And all I'm seeing is, oh, wait a minute, let me see, I have town meeting here. Uh, uh, don't, don't worry about me. I'll deal with this, uh, thank you.
Okay. And for some reason, she's got Railroad Street as brown dots too, but that's commercial, that's the Village Commercial District, so. We're gonna make this map better. That might be supposed to be a different color. Maybe that's orange and not brown. I think that one's supposed to be orange.
No.
Anyway, they had the really old maps at Regional Planning before Jolena Court was even a district, so it was. Difficult getting this map.
Soon, yes.
Okay, so if you all could think about what you wanna call this district, that would be good, then we could.
Yeah, I'm back.
For next time. Okay, did I stop sharing? What's up? Screen stopped sharing, okay. All right, so. What I did was I then took the, um. Documents where we had left them in July of twenty twenty-one. Uh, a text for these two neighborhood districts. And marked them up. And maybe you could share this for me, this would be off the package.
Okay.
I marked them up with some of the things that. To try to make them look like the new RC Districts, so we could introduce some coherence gradually. In this document that we're doing, district by district. Um, and I added a few concepts also, besides. Making the text look similar in structure, parallel in structure to the new districts that we. Have approved. I added a few concepts to see, just draft, to see if you think these are going to be suitable. To put into these districts. So we can look at the south first, the south one first, since Gary's here. Yeah. So. We had not included Thompson Road originally in those documents. We hadn't, uh, we hadn't included. Um. Oh, I guess we had Thompson Road, we had portions of Cochrane Road. We hadn't had Bridge Street, because we were considering putting that into a round church. Neighborhood separate, and then we put them together, made just a single Neighborhood South District. So, um, this adds the properties on the East and West Bridge Street, south of the Winuski River. And properties on Old Brooklyn Court. So that was different from what we had the last time we left off looking at this. The line in blue that says including all properties within the Municipal Water and Sewer District. On Cochrane Road, we would probably, if we were taking some of those out, based on our conversation today, we would change that. That would be different back, probably back to the way it was before. So, the purpose is the same. Um. We had. Something in there about protecting the view of the round church. I don't know if this is what we wanna say. When we were considering that to be in a separate district, it didn't, there wasn't any mention there. So you can look at that in blue. Do we want a traditional residential surrounding what for the iconic round church? Well, it wasn't always traditionally residential. So, but maybe that's what we want. We wanna protect it with residences. I don't know. You can think about, I mean, these are all just things to think about. Um, then the character of the neighborhood. Um, then the character of the neighborhoods will be primarily residential. We have a historic view shot of the round church just maintained. Okay, so that's pretty much what we had before, back in July of twenty-one. Going down to the uses. And just yell if you, you know, have a comment about any of these things. So in terms of conditional uses. We didn't have the childcare facility, large home-based, which we had as a conditional use in the north neighborhood. So I don't know if we want that here or not. And also a supported housing facility. That was also um, a new definition that we introduced into the document in the course of doing the RC district, so we didn't have it anywhere before, but we already have a supported housing facility in this district, which is Richmond Terrace's, so maybe we would like to allow that as a conditional use. So moving on from the conditional uses. You all are thinking about all of these. So I changed the way we're talking about lot size and density to match the way we're talking about it, which is the newer planning way of talking about it. Um, it does mean for minimum lot size area, if you say a half an acre, it's really twenty-two thousand square feet. So this is a little bit less than a half an acre. I don't know if we want to put twenty-two thousand square feet or twenty thousand square feet, but I think we should try to be consistent, because we decided for the RC district that that was the way we were gonna go, and that that was the way we were gonna go through the rest of the document as we amended it, to modernize it. There was no density number, because we hadn't really considered that until we talked about the RC districts. So in this district, the maximum residential density, one dwelling for every ten thousand square feet, which is approximately a quarter of an acre. That is like having one duplex on your half-acre lot. It's a little bit less, because it should be eleven thousand square feet if it's really a quarter of an acre. But if you look at the other documents of other towns that use this system, it's always ten thousand or twenty thousand, it's a very round number, so. Okay, the lot dimensions, that's the same thing that we've had in all the lots, and it seems to be no reason to change it, we just hadn't put it in this one for some reason. Minimum lot frontage, it's the same as we've always had in this area and every other area. We didn't have it in this one for some reason. Then the maximum lot coverage, so we left this document off at forty percent lot coverage. I don't know if we want to go a little bit higher, if we're trying to allow for a little bit more building space. So you can think about, do we want to go to fifty? We're not going to sixty, which is where we went with the RC districts.
Virginia?
Yep.
Does the lot coverage? Is that limited to permanent structures? Or does that, or does that include things like a paved parking lot or a shed without a foundation?
Structures. And I don't think the pavement is a structure, but it might include that.
I think it includes.
Pavement.
I think it includes gravel, too.
Yeah.
Permeable surface versus non-permeable surface.
Yeah.
So that driveway would be non-permeable, it would be lock coverage. A shed would be lock coverage.
Yeah, any building for sure, whether or not it has a foundation. I mean, a chicken house on wheels, that probably wouldn't. Because you can move it around. So do you have a further thought about that, Dan, or?
No, I'm just, I'm just trying to picture if we have a minimum lot size, if, you know, if, if a goal is to allow, you know, assuming every lot can become ten thousand square feet and a house is on every single one, what that looks like for a proportion and scale and actual, you know, the function of that. So I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to picture in my head that you have a single-family home with a driveway and either a garage or some sort of shed or something like that, and, and what that feels and looks like. So I'm just trying to picture it.
Well, if you've got ten thousand square feet. You have five thousand.
That joy. Oh, that's Allison.
No, I'm just, I'm talking to myself. I'm just figuring out, like, if you, if you've got fifty thousand square feet and your lot coverage is fifty percent, then you've got, um, uh, I was trying to figure out, uh, okay, fifty thousand, you've got twenty-five thousand square feet that you can, I was trying to figure out how big a house you could put there.
Well, or you could go at it a different way, which is if you have a minimum lot size of twenty thousand square feet and you have fifty percent lock coverage, so you have ten thousand square feet that you can build upon, that you can put a house and and pavement or parking, ten thousand square feet, will that do it? Is that adequate? It seems like your house is probably not going to be bigger than, what, five thousand square feet? That would be huge, so, you know, two thousand, two, twenty-five hundred square feet. And then the rest could be paving or shed or garage or.
I think that seems like it should be adequate.
It seems doable, what it would look like, Dan, I mean, I don't know exactly, but fifty percent of it is going to be in vegetation. So.
What do we have now? Do we have anything like that exactly, the same now, that talks about lot coverage? I'm not sure.
We have lot coverage. And so let's say in the HDR district, which is our residential, main residential district. The lot coverage is forty percent. So this would be a little bit more. The RC district used to be forty percent, we went to sixty percent. So this is kind of halfway between doing nothing and you know, allowing for a little bit more building.
Well, I like Mark's definition of it being permeable or impermeable soil, because that makes the, um, makes the gravel driveway a little ambiguous, I would say.
If it's impermeable, then that counts as coverage. So the gravel driveway would count as coverage.
Yeah.
I agree with it in general. I think there are ways that, that are quite expensive to build a permeable driveway that has water storage built in. I don't know how that, well, they work. It seems to me like over time they're gonna just soak up, but.
I think I've seen those.
That, but there's also a type of concrete that doesn't form a solid block, has a lot of air spaces in it. The water can sit in there and I, I don't know, it would take a long time to evaporate out, so. I know they're doing that on some parking lots, I don't, I haven't heard about it for driveways.
Okay, so. Um, so anyway, you can think about that, lot coverage, height, it was just not in there, but we're still stuck at thirty-five feet, except for section six point, four point eleven. Was just not written in here, and it's in our new district, so we're putting it in here. Setbacks. Principal structure, minimum ten feet, accessory should be behind the principal structure. Attached garage. Presumably, if we add in the provision that you can put two residential principal structures on a lot, we might have to reorganize this a little bit to say if there's any restrictions about where you can put them. So if neither one is an accessory structure or dwelling, then what's the, what's the regulation there? Do they both have to be ten feet, just ten feet from the front? I assume, so. So those the numbers in black, they were there before in the document that we left off working with. Side yard setback, I don't think there were numbers in there. Rear fifteen feet, which I think was in there before. Okay, you can scroll a little bit more ahead. Okay, so those are the dimensional standards. Then we come to the section in our RC districts that's called the district-specific development standards. The question is, you know, what do we want in this section? There really wasn't much of anything in the documents that we left off. So the infrastructure, all lots shall be served by municipal water and sewer, because we put it in the sewer and water district. Sidewalks shall be provided whenever feasible. Now, you know, this is a question, we need sidewalks. We probably need an official map to have official sidewalks and you know, every time a sidewalk comes up at the moment, short of an official map, it will be debated about whether it's needed, whether it's good, whether it's useful, whether it's cost-effective. So a wimpy way of putting it in the zoning is to say that we want them, and we're gonna put them in whenever feasible. But I'm certainly open to other suggestions about that. Site design standards and building design standards, do we want these? In the two RC districts, we mainly put them in, well, in the gateway RC district, we put them in to maintain the scenic gateway quality of that district. In the village, we put them in, uh, to make sure that compatible, there was compatibility between the businesses and the residences. So do we want them in a strictly residential area? I don't know, that's, so I didn't put anything in there. Another thing that we added in to the RC districts was the additional multifamily housing standards. Now, the way we have it right now, they would apply to every district, because they're written for the whole um, document. But we did mention them in the RC districts, just to draw people's attention to them. So we're just mentioning them here. If the language that we have submitted to the select board is approved, they would apply here, but we're mentioning them. So.
But.
Yep.
Are multifamily housing units allowed above? It's not in your list, is it?
No. They're not, but. So it's moot.
So I don't know why you put them in, it's kind of would lead people to think that they are allowed.
Except in a PUD.
Okay, so that, that was a question I wanted to bring up, so.
Yeah.
In a PUD, you, you can't, because I, I asked that question to DRB once a few years ago. Um, I didn't, I thought they said they didn't think it was allowed, because it wasn't allowed in the zone. So you couldn't just gang up all your units into into a multifamily then. So I think somewhere in the document, it'd be nice to be clear about either in the PUD section or here, whether you can do that or you can't do it.
Right, I mean, I guess if it's a use, if it's listed as a use, and you have to only, if you're limited to the uses, because you can vary all the dimensional standards and, uh, you know, other features, but maybe you can't vary the uses. So if it's not allowed as a use, but we could certainly clarify that. And, you know, if we're in our uses, we only have a two-family, and the multifamily housing standards only apply for three or more, so. Uh, probably could be left out. But we will try to clarify that. I mean, there are a lot of things about the PUD section that need to be clarified. It's on our list.
Okay.
Okay. Um, multiple structures on a lot, do we want to entertain this? We brought this in for the RC districts. Do we want to have two principal structures hosting residential uses on a lot? This is like your duplex without the wall between them. And, and if so, if we want to allow multiple structures on a lot, then we probably have to have something in setbacks about them, I suppose, or maybe they just follow the same setbacks. Do they, is there any restriction of them next to each other, how close they have to be? Why not? Why? I don't know.
I'll say, I'm really glad to see this in there, because I think it allows for a lot more creativity without increasing density. Because if you can do two units in a duplex, why don't, why shouldn't you have the freedom to design the same density as two individual units? It seems to me it's gonna have the same effect on the neighborhood, but allows for some more creative designs, I think. The one thing, question I would have with it, though, is that I think under our ordinance, and I didn't check this, but.
That's good.
The accessory uh, units are only, are only for single family. The duplex can't do one. So I think you should deal with the issue, if you're gonna allow these two units, can those units then have, each have a ADU on top of that? It's me, that that's it, it should be even with the duplex, you know, if you're trying to, I mean, unless you're gonna count an ADU as a requiring a ten thousand square foot parcel, too, which you don't.
No.
You see what I mean? If somebody wants to split it as two principal structures on ten, times twenty thousand square feet, and then do two ADUs, suddenly you've got four units instead of two. Whereas a duplex isn't allowed for two additional units.
So in the definition in state statute, the accessory dwelling relates to a single-family dwelling.
Right.
Only, that's part of the definition.
Right, so if you're doing two single-family dwellings.
Instead of a duplex.
Does that then allow you to do two more units? So I don't know, if you don't want to allow that, if you somehow describe a duplex in our ordinance as being two units that don't, doesn't have to be connected, I don't, I don't know how you do.
Right. All right. All right, so we would have to deal with that in some way.
Ju- just to chime in, I, I think, and I, I can't find the statute right off, uh, hand, but there is a statutory limit, or maybe it was a case, but I thought it was a statute, that limited the ability to not allow ADUs. And I don't, I don't think that was tethered to, to single-family homes. I think that was tethered to residential zoning. But I, this was maybe a, a year plus ago that it was passed, I'm kind of blanking on it, so there might be. But I, this was maybe a a year plus ago that it was passed, I'm kind of blanking on it. So there might be, there might, we might have limited abilities to to say you can't have an ADU. Just something to consider. I'm happy to look into, but.
And in fact, there may be even more of that coming down with some of these housing bills, which are really trying to limit towns' ability to not allow housing. They may be even more concerned with that. So you would have to really see how it was written, exactly how it was written. And in the Colchester Regulation where they avoided the whole messy ADU problem by saying you could have a secondary cottage, which we avoided by just saying you could have two principal structures, but maybe if you have a cottage, it doesn't allow you to have an ADU. Maybe that solves that problem. I don't know. We'll have to look into that anyway about the ADU question. All right. So I think that those changes, and I put them in the memo in your packet, sort of a list, a short list of what changes we might want to consider. And do we want any site design standards? Do we want any building design standards? Let's be trying to think about that and think about in this residential neighborhood is that, do we want to introduce those new kind of standards?
Gary, didn't you, I think you and I had a conversation a while ago about certain features that you noted most, if not all of the structures in you know, this, I live over here, this area had, and I think that was in part roof pitch.
Right.
Are there, are there other, other design uh consistencies?
Yeah, it's it's kind of tough because they're they're not on all buildings. I mean, for a long time, the standard roof pitch was like eight, twelve in that area. For probably many decades when it was first being developed, which is the pitch of the round church. But you know, it's not consistent enough, I think, to say a room house has to be eight, twelve pitch. I don't know. I've thought about that. What about, I don't have a set of set of things. And then you look at something like uh uh McIntyre. Kathy McIntyre, the old Brian Mack house that is old on the front and new on the back.
Looks great.
Yeah, I mean, some people love it, some people hate it, but I think for the most part, people think it looks pretty good. Do we really want to rule out?
Right.
Stuff like that.
Yeah. And then there's the duplex on Carcon Road that's metal.
Yeah.
The prison.
Yeah.
Um, but do we want to rule that out? I mean, maybe we need to move along and let new materials come in. You know, the kinds of things we have in the other districts. Roof pitch, materials. Um, no parking in the front. Well, a lot of houses already park in the front, so I'm not sure you can really do that. And of course, the closer you park to the road, the less miles you travel, which is an energy thing.
A shovel.
You know, so um all of those things are a little bit questionable unless you're really striving for a certain look in a certain place. You know, like the gateway, we were kind of striving for a certain look, but with residences, why not let people go crazy with it anyway? I don't know. So.
Even within like the historic preservation standards, they they want additions and and new stuff to not, generally, they don't want it to look like the old stuff. Exactly. They want the people to not look at it not be able to tell that that's an addition. I know that got into that on the monitor barn and maybe the addition, historic preservation didn't want it to look exactly like the other barn. I I mean, I have heard there's only like two places in America that follows kind of slavishly rules. One of them is Nantucket where you know, they get down at everything. So new buildings really do look like old buildings, but generally historic preservation doesn't encourage that.
Okay, so just do another few minutes. The neighborhoods north is pretty much the same issues, you know, do we want to add supported housing, for instance? And I guess supported housing, if you add that, maybe you do need the multifamily housing standards? I don't know. That's a question that I don't know uh I think we'll have to look at that, whether, what if support of supported housing facility is a multifamily unit building? Is that okay or not? Okay? We'll have to think about that. The minimum lot size in the north, we went to ten thousand square feet. There are smaller lots, a lot of the lots are already smaller, ten thousand square feet or less anyway. Residential density with a dwelling unit for every five thousand square feet, which is like eight units. So on every quarter of an acre, you could put a duplex essentially. We can think about that. That's where we ended up before. Most of the other issues are about the same. Do we want to have the multifamily housing standards? Maybe we don't need them if we're not allowing multifamilies. Do we want multiple structures on a lot? And we'll need to you know, make sure we have all the implications of that, like about the ADUs. So anyway, that's just adding to what we had. And so you all could think about those things for our next conversation. The traffic impact is the whole, that whole issue is question, the question about the traffic impact. And the Tyler has already talked to me about the fact that they can't get hold of the trip generation tenth edition and Institute of Traffic Engineers, ITE, they can't get it for less than eight hundred and fifty dollars a year. So could they please not have to use it and regional planning can't share theirs under their license with the ITE. So anyway, uh it's a little problematic, the whole traffic impact statement there that we have. Allison.
Well, I'm just kind of chuckling as I'm hearing this. Why doesn't one of us just go over there and read what it says? Uh, that'd be one way to deal with it. I I do think we want to be careful not to have uh like if you start putting duplexes on quarter acre lots and then I just think that could start to feel a little crowded. Uh, and um I know we're trying to make more homes for people, but at the same time, uh, we have to remember that we have a road infrastructure that was designed. Much of it was designed before cars were built and and we don't have the width in between buildings uh in some places uh for the kind of parking that we might need. So I I just want to mention that that is something that I do think about. I guess I've said it before.
Yeah. Yeah, well, that is a question. The other thing that we have, but I, it's not available to share right now, is we do have the lot sizes for all the lots in the village. So it would be nice to be able to look at those and to see which ones already have duplexes on them and see what they're like, you know, because there are quite a number of lots that are either in the one third or one quarter acre size in the north neighborhood. Um, and as you said.
See what they are now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the other thing that CCRPC offers is that they have a new modeling, three D modeling tool that can, if you come up with exactly what you want to visualize, like Dan was talking about, they can make three D visualizations of it. So but you you have to know exactly what you want. And so if we figure that out, then we can do that. All right. So any more comments or questions or anything, or ways that you want to proceed with this information? Before we take a little while, just a really short period of time to talk about the short term rentals? Since we're trying to run these two things together at the same time. Any hands? Yeah, Gary?
I'll just say that I thought I thought what you've done to the South District is good. I think it's a good compromise from what some of the neighbors want and trying to get more growth in there without going crazy. Um I I just say I support it. I like almost every part of it would have some questions which I brought up, but yeah, generally, I think it's good.
Okay. Great. So um yeah, well, the goal is to compromise really, you know? I mean, there are factors driving us in all the different directions. So the goal is to compromise. All right. Well, thank you for coming since you own a large piece of land in that district.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions or are you happy with this way of proceeding? What what do you want to do for the next time we talk about this, this, these two districts?
Well, um, I guess what? Can I say something, Virginia?
Yes, please, Allison.
Yeah, I I think I think I personally need to go downtown and wander around. I and yeah, I just, I need to do that and get a sense of of some of these places because I I don't I I tend to drive through town and I don't know enough about these neighborhoods really to be making those kinds of comments. And so I think that that's what I should do. And I don't know. Um, I I guess that's the next thing is to and get a sense of the people there and you know what the yards are like and how much land do they have? And is there more space and can we widen the road, whatever? I need to just go down there and look at it.
It sounds good. Sounds like good homework. I mean, you know, I thought that the, when we went to the gateway, it was quite instructive.
Yes.
That field trip that we went on, so.
Yes, I think that that's right. Uh, and we went on that trip with some of the people who lived there and we got a uh had a friendly conversation. I think that was a a good thing. And maybe we, I don't know, maybe we should all go down there, but I I think maybe I'll try to go down there. Uh, when, and maybe it might be in a few days after some of this snow melts. Um, my car is always, my car has been buried for two days.
All right.
With the snow is something.
Good luck with digging it out.
I already dug it out yesterday in case I needed to go somewhere. I woke up this morning, it looked just like the same. It's like uh uh, what was that movie? Um, the
Groundhog.
Yeah, Groundhog Day. That's what it was. Groundhog Day in March.
Um, Lisa.
Yeah, thanks. Um, I I was just reading the law and I'm still allowed to be on the planning commission regardless. So I I was in Virginia, um, you know, we're, we're down in the details here and we have a, you know, more or less a pretty good understanding of what can be put on a parcel plan, but looking ahead, there's going to be public hearings and people in these neighborhoods who uh, they start reading the stuff and if they get to page four or five, they're going to kind of, their eyes will glaze over. Is there some way to produce just a like a typical rendering? I hope people wouldn't think it's the only thing that could be put on a parcel when we show like two buildings, you know, half a building distance apart or something like that. But it's something to convert all the language into a picture that people can kind of uh chew on. Is is there a possibility of doing that? Now, I know there's almost any number of combinations of things on any particular parcel in any of our zones. So whatever we chose, we don't want to represent as the only possible uh uh, you know, creation. But I don't know, let me throw that out. You don't have to say yes or no, but um, just wanted to throw that idea out.
Well, regional planning says they can make us renderings of whatever. So we just have to tell them what we want, though. I mean, you know, they need to have something specific enough that they can.
Okay, okay. I didn't know that. If they could, do they need, are they willing to read it and then interpret it and put it into a rendering? Or do they need someone to feed it to them?
No, I think they need us to tell them exactly what it is that we want. Do we want a picture of two principal residences on a one quarter acre lot with a fifty percent coverage or something like that, you know?
Yeah.
What do we want exactly? So if people would like to think up what we want exactly, then we could uh work with them to develop, you know, obviously they want to develop something that we want, so we need to tell them.
Yeah. Maybe, maybe the maximum that could be uh done legally uh in each of our zoning districts. Uh, now, still, the maximum could be arranged in any number of ways, but maybe the maximum coverage or um if there's one principal building, uh, it's it's ma- it's closest distance to the uh property lines or something. I I'm not sure what I'm asking for, but if there's, if there was a picture that would help people digest this, uh, I think would be very helpful.
Yeah, I mean, one of the problems with doing that kind of thing is that there are a lot of other constraints.
I know, yeah.
Resource constraints. So regional planning is not going to be able to look at every single lot.
Oh, oh, exactly.
Know what the constraints are that are above and beyond the density and the lot size. So.
Yeah, I I think just for um for argument's sake, we might pick a parcel in the middle of any particular zone, not a large parcel or the smallest one, but one that's maybe the most representative size or the most average size of parcels in that zone. And uh doctor it up with some, some uh structures. And I guess I'd be interested to know what Gary thinks about that, too.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I think you know, like, I think about trying to get additional housing on a lot. A lot of the lots are kind of narrow and long, so determine the duplexes versus having a front house and a back house in between uh that's something you you could show in a rendering that
Yeah.
made, you know, you could do a house with a connecting unit that runs connected out the back.
Huh, interesting.
Versus having two independent houses on a lot.
Mm hmm, maybe more constrained. Yeah, maybe.
I really think that section will increase the number of units in the village more than anything else you guys could do because it it opens up so many more options than doing a straight duplex. And I think a lot of people that don't really like the idea of, well, I don't really want somebody living in my house on the other side of that wall versus I wouldn't mind having somebody living fifty feet away from me in a in a cottage out back.
Mm hmm, mm hmm. Huh, interesting. All right. Anyway, Virginia, there's just wanted to throw that out and see, uh, see if it happens.
Yeah, well, we'll see what we can come up with. I mean, you probably wouldn't want to pick any existing lot, certainly without.
That's true, might be a threat.
But you could make a hypothetical lot and.
Exactly. The average size of a district or something, or an odder shape than just square, you know, something like that. Okay, thank you.
So, yeah, and I'll get hold of the maps that have the lot sizes on them so we can see actually how many lots might even be potential to put another set on.
Well, that's a good idea, sure. Well, that's a good idea, sure.
So. Alright, so maybe everybody can go look at the neighborhoods by next time and we can. Either that or we'll have to have a field trip. So. Okay, so just a few minutes on short-term rentals, since we have said we would move this along. So. The memo, I guess, just the meeting memo. You know, I think where we're at with this topic, which is like brand new to us. But it has come up several times in our discussion about housing, what about the short-term rentals? You know, why aren't you doing anything about that? You're increasing density, but you're not doing anything about short-term rentals, which are. Removing uh longer-term housing, so. The items for discussion, I think. Are what, what are the issues that we're trying to solve? You know, what are the goals here? Is it like? People are partying and there's no one who has a contact. Do we want it? Are we just thinking about it because of the removal of longer-term housing? Is that the goal that we're trying to? Solve, so at the top of that page that's on your screen. The statutory authority, there is statutory authority for this, we looked it up. There are current state requirements, but we ought to know what those are. You know, the meals, room and meals tax, and who's going to collect the tax and all of those kinds of issues. These are kinds of things that we might stick our new town planner on, who can gather this information. Statewide requirements are under consideration in the legislature, so by the end of this legislative session, there might be some requirements like a statewide register. And then the question. That um. Revy talked about was, do we do this by?
I can't talk to you right now. I'll get on the internet.
Thank you, Allison. Um, are we going to do this by our zoning? Or by a freestanding ordinance, which gives us more ability to do. Different kinds of activities like have the registry, so. Anyway. Maybe we can think about those questions so that we have. Good, a good basis to start this discussion. And then next were a few. Ideas that. From looking at other. Um attempts in Vermont to do this. Ideas to think about that the owner. Must be a permanent resident basically of the property. And then if the owner's not in the residence, the the second most important thing people have felt is that the town has to have contact information. Where you can get a hold of this person. The owner. So that if there's a problem that the town is dealing with, they will know where to go to for the owner. And you know, one of the things that people are trying to do is not have. A commercial business that has lots of dwellings that are all short-term rentals, so that. Might be something that. You know, we could prevent, you can only do your own building or maybe one other building on the. Premises. Maximum number of rooms, I've seen that in there, and then. People who rent could do short-term rentals if they live there with the permission of the landlord, so. Those are just. Other things that people have tried in the fourteen or so towns in Vermont that. Are trying to do this. Do we even have a problem with this, you know? I mean, there are a lot of things to ascertain. Before we go too far into it, so if everybody can think about those things, that would be good. And our new director of planning and zoning will be here in April. Maybe some of those issues he could work on if people want. Any comments or questions about that? Are people still interested in working on short-term rentals?
Yes, definitely.
Yes?
Yes.
Everybody's still interested in working on it, okay. Anybody have any feelings about any of these goals or? What is it we're trying to do with the short-term rentals?
I think. This is a great outline to start the conversation with, you know. I can speak for myself personally, I think it i- it's something that uh has impeded uh long-term residential. Issues, and so, yeah, that that's our goal is to. Increase housing stock for people to actually live. In the town rather than uh. Turn everything into a. Into Airbnb. See that a lot. And it's, I I definitely think it has an impact.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Yeah. At the same time, there are going to be many people who already have short-term rentals who are gonna. Be, have their. Their issues with some of the things that are on this list. But. Happy to have the conversation, there's a lot to go over here.
And I mean, I think the question is in Richmond, are are people commercially doing short-term rentals? Or are they mostly renting rooms out of their own house? Which we don't know, and that would be something that we could start off as trying to, how much? How many short-term rental situations there are in Richmond? One of Revy's interns supposedly gained this information, but I wasn't able to find it anywhere in his notes. So we don't know how many of these there are. In Richmond and what, you know, what the nature of them is, is it one room in a house, is it a whole house? Is it several rooms in a house that are continuously being rented out on short-term rentals?
All of the above.
All of the above, yep. Be at all surprised. Yeah, Gary.
Yeah, I think, you know, the point Lisa made last meeting was about. It's key. Issue is to look at the uh, if the owner's going to be around for the rental, uh I think that's an important one. I I I think. We'd want to. I would want to regulate, like investor on, people coming in to buy properties that is actually taking it out of the rental market. That is a problem to me, but. Somebody wanting to rent out their guest room or something, you know, those portions of the house. Or something that isn't going to be. Wouldn't be a. Rental otherwise to a full-time renter. Then I don't think we should restrict those kind of activity.
Yeah, so, and that may just be putting parameters around it, you know, what, how many? What does it mean if you say the owner? Can only rent out part of their house, can, does the owner have to be there? Does the owner, you know, could it be an owner who lives somewhere else, but their owner and they're renting it out or? You know, so it's just actually defining those exact parameters? Or what about people who go to Florida for four months, you know, can they be renting that out? That's not exactly taking up any long-term housing. But I think a lot of people think that's reasonable. That you can not have a, as a commercial operation, as a business that you're doing short-term rentals. You can just rent out part of your house or your ADU for that matter. So. Okay, so we'll go on working on this and maybe get our new town planner. Who is Keith Oberhorn, who worked for us for a little while as a zoning administrator. He will start on March twenty seventh, he's coming back as the director of planning and zoning, and the planning part is the part that interests him, so. Hopefully that will work out well. The. Only other items for other business, unless anybody has anything else to say about short-term rentals? No, okay. I sent the airspace language to BTV. Saying this is what we want to put in our zoning regulation. If the select board approves it, keep in mind, it's an amendment to our zoning ordinance, so it will have to go through the select board procedure at some point. And. The other amendments are going to have their public hearing on April tenth. The RC districts. Joy.
Virginia, when is the select board meeting on the gateway regulations that we sent through?
They are meeting, they're having a public hearing on the tenth of April.
Okay.
So we had. At their meeting two nights ago. Uh I went and gave a short introduction. So that they could set the date for a public hearing, so they set the date for a public hearing. For April tenth, and it's going to be in a bigger venue, just in case people show up and want to talk about it. And I think that's. Only thing on the list, yeah. Okay, anybody else have anything else they want to say? Joy, is your hand still up or is that a new hand? Thank you. Alright, so I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn for the evening.
Made by Mark, any second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Allison and Dan simultaneously. Alright, all in favor of adjourning should say aye. Great. That's everybody. Alright, well, thanks for coming, um, you know. If you think about these issues, that'll be good, then we'll be able to move along with it. I'll make some new maps, I'll get the regional planning to make some new maps. And I will talk to the, those people we said we talked to.
Thanks, thanks for the outline, the the research that you did sort of setting up this conversation.
You are welcome, yep.
Thanks, Virginia.
Virginia, thanks y'all.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye, everybody.
See you next time, three weeks till our next meeting, so you'll have plenty of time to walk about in the village.
Sounds good, night all.